All right, well, I stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and just as a.
All right, I guess we'll move into roll call.
Yes, so welcome to the July meeting of the Cape May Beach Safety Committee. We're going to do roll call. Steve Stagger.
Here.
Christine DiDonato here. Lorraine Baldwin.
Here.
Harry Back. Sarah Werner. Not here. In lieu of Alex Coulter, Ed Zabrowski. Thank you. Tom Medvecky. Eric Przynski. Roy Sundstrom. He let us know it was his birthday today. He would not be here. Katie Rafter.
Here.
And William Kurtz. Thank you. I'm just gonna ask, so did everyone got a chance to review the minutes from June? If anyone had any thoughts or changes that needed to be made?
No, they all look good.
Okay. Motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Steve, thank you. Second?
I can't second because I wasn't there.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So, Steve, you want to say?
Yep.
Sorry, that means.
So, I just want to welcome William Kurtz to the Beach Safety Committee.
Thank you.
And Bill, if you'd like, for those watching out there, really tell a little bit about yourself.
Ah geez, I've been a resident.
Wait, to take your.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Dan. Tell your story.
I'll tell my story, let me see. I've been here a long time. I moved here in nineteen seventy-two. Been on the island somewhere, most of it here in Cape May on Soul Avenue or Washington Street. Been in the restaurant business for twenty-five years. I've been a realtor for thirty-three. This kind of tickled my fancy, this committee, because my family has a lot of history from myself, my brother from years ago in the Beach Patrol in Wildwood, to my son's guard here. And that I remember when it was the way it was, when it was safe. And I don't live too far from the elementary school where the chopper lands to take these people out of here that get hurt. So, if I can add some help to this committee, that's why I'm here. If I can't, you can just tell me to go home. That's about all I have to say.
Great.
Welcome.
Thanks for joining.
My pleasure.
All right, I guess we'll move on to subcommittee progress discussion. So I guess we'll start with the, any kind of PA system updates.
I actually have, yes, some updates on that. We're looking at targeting by the end of August, going out to bid. Possibly sooner if we can get everything together and everybody together. It's tough in the summertime. A lot of people are going on vacation. But we have to get all the parties together, finalize the bid documents, and go out to bid. We have not received final jurisdiction from the DEP. But if we need to apply for a full permit, we can do that. But we felt that it was really imperative that we go out for bids and pretty much be ready in the fall.
Right, start pricing up the projects, stuff like that.
Yep.
Is this, is this gonna be funded by the city entirely? Or is there any kind of grant funding that's gonna be going after?
As far as I know, there have been no grants, you know, that we've either applied for or any grants that would fit this, you know, this, you know, kind of a project. But we, in the tourism, there are funds available in the budget.
And I guess, just to kind of, for those that aren't familiar with it, so we're, because I'm not sure how much you know about the PA speaker system or you. You want to just give them like a brief overview on what we've been working on?
Absolutely. So, there was phase one that was done about six, seven years ago, which was from the Cove all the way up to Convention Hall. You see all the speakers that are out on the boardwalk? They're tied into headquarters. The phase two part of it is going to expand from Convention Hall all the way down to Wilmington. They're gonna be actually closer to the beach. There are existing poles that are out there. I think we have to plop in three more poles.
Yeah, because of where the dunes are and how they keep moving up because of the dune fencing, I think some of the things we were talking about were just putting them wherever the new dune fence was and simply dig a trench and run the wires up there. That way they can be. The wireless systems, according to what everybody looked into, weren't really effective for down there, or I forget what the issues were.
There were, there were two reasons. The distance between the poles.
Right.
And also the possibility of like interference because it's wireless.
Yeah.
You know, you know, so they didn't want to have the, that, you know, that kind of liability as far as the interference with it.
And the thing is, you know, we could, you can move the poles around every year depending upon how the beach moves. You could take the unit down, run new wires to it basically, and deal with that way. In lieu of, we can't really do it on the promenade because of the, this is how the promenade is constructed with the submerged rocks and stuff like that. So, that's pretty much the plan to extend.
Do you have all the permits for these?
That is what we've been going back and forth having to do. We were trying to get an answer from the DEP. Can you even put lines in the sand like this? And I'm not sure what they.
Yeah, I spoke to Vince. They're very close as far as, you know, as far as giving us a determination. That's why we feel confident and comfortable with going out to bid at this point. Okay? So, we're moving along. I see the project completion date, 2023. I think we're still on target for that.
All right, anybody have any questions about the PA system? All right, we'll move along to beach replenishment. I guess, I guess Mark will have something maybe to talk about this tonight on, I guess, the modeling that we're seeking.
Mm-hmm, yeah, Mark's.
Mark, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. So, we're talking about beach replenishment and just wanted to see if you had any thoughts on modeling or any updates?
So, I guess my comments for the meeting today are, we're waiting to see if the stocks and surveys of the beaches have been completed, just to have that data. And then, separate from that, we're still in the process of trying to evaluate the best way to procure a coastal engineer for the committee. We're looking at one other avenue in lieu of doing an RFP, which has not played out yet. As Lorraine had mentioned earlier, it's tough trying to get some answers from people in the summer. So, we're kind of in that same boat, but we're hopeful that within the next week or so, we're gonna be looking at a different option in lieu of an RFP. And we're gonna run that down, and if we fall short, then it would probably turn into an RFP for coastal engineering.
And just to update you, Mark, I did speak to Lou Belasco. He in turn spoke to Stu Farrell at Stockton. The full survey has been completed, so now we have a full survey of all of our beaches, whether it be DEP or Stockton. The report should be here by the end of this week.
Okay.
Okay? So, that will help as far as whatever coastal engineer we, you know, we're looking at, or, you know, at this point, you're kind of vetting them at this point. They'll have a lot of information to go on.
This is a part of the data collection that's needed in order to initiate the coastal study as to like what kind of modeling can be done with the geography of each beach, pretty much.
The existing conditions.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, anything else to add there, Mark?
No, that was it. Hope everyone's staying cool.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna mute you. Let me know if you need anything.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Mark.
Yes, that's pretty much the update where we're at with hiring a coastal engineer to perform a modeling as to what kind of solutions can be rendered to, I guess, re-engineer the beaches in such a way that, you know, you don't have the bad shore break, whether it's building new jetties, bulkheads in certain locations, different sand replenishment practices, some stuff that can be done by the city themselves, but just with general sand maintenance. And then, long-term planning for having the surveys done, but what do you say, like every couple of years?
Yeah, they'll continue to do the surveys, just if there's a, if there's a storm that comes in, we can then replenish back to the existing template that we had. So, we can shift sand to a certain extent. That's the reason for the survey, and then that survey is gonna be a jump-off point for when we're looking at some sort of a demonstration project for how do we make our beach slope safer? Are there models that are out there, or can they create models that are out there that can make our beach slopes safer?
So, I'm just trying to get myself up to speed here.
Yeah.
The jetties hit the inlet. That's basically the problem.
Yes.
From what I understand. The sand goes there, stops, and gets pushed back to the crest of Wildwood rather than come south. So, is it the object of this committee to get that sand to actually move south somehow? Direct it somehow?
That's why we're trying to hire the coastal engineer to come up with modeling. If that's even, if that's done, will that help?
Yeah.
Maybe not, you know? When we had a conversation with the DEP representative in the wintertime, the unofficial meeting we had, this was some of the things he talked about. You don't really know until you concretely go out and go after these studies to be done.
Because that's the only thing the DEP will really look at.
Right, and once you have your solutions, then, and only then really, you can go after, you know, congressional officials and stuff like that, to put this in front of them like, hey, this is what we want to do. Can you fund this project in lieu of beach replenishment? That's pretty much the path that has to be taken, basically. But you have to get all the data together, which is what we're doing right now, which obviously takes some time, and analyze the existing conditions that are here today, and then see what kind of solutions can be offered in the future.
Has it been determined that it's the big jetties or the small jetties throughout?
I'd say nothing has really been determined. What I can do is I can share with you some of the resolutions that the federal government has with the city of Cape May. And you can see what they, what they have, and that's part of that. Up until 2040, they're gonna do beach replenishment to the city at very little cost to the city. So, I'll share all of that information with you. Okay?
But basically, the all things in writing from the federal government suggest that they're responsible for correcting the, or creating initiatives to correct the beaches as best as they can. But it takes, you know, obviously, it takes the city council and the city to actively try to like figure out ways to go do that too, which is, that's the purpose of this.
So, they're taking responsibility because the Army Corps built the big jetties at the inlet?
Basically, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Well, it's nice of them.
I think it, I think they built it, I don't want to go, I want to say nineteen eighteen?
Yeah.
That's when it all started.
Yeah, and there was a reason for the jetties, obviously.
Yeah, at the time.
Yeah.
But I don't think the long-term effects were really known back at that time. It was over hundreds of years, hundreds of years ago, so. So, that's basically where we're at with that. So, just to kind of bring, get to speed with that, that's what's going on. So, it's a tough kind of the year to kind of initiate all these various communications with all these officials. So, hopefully in the fall, we can kind of hit the ground running a little harder with this because the next, I think the next beach replenishment project is scheduled to 2024.
They just completed the one in Wilmington.
Yeah, they just did that this year. So, we have some time to try to initiate some different tactics.
Okay.
If anybody has any other questions?
Katie, do you have any questions there? I know that you're just hearing some of us as well.
I actually got up to Steve last meeting. Yeah, thank you.
Beach safety, surf zone, and educating the public. So, as of right now, I can't really speak on what Tom's done with the curriculum. I think that's pretty...
I, may I speak?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, what I was hoping to do here is first, just to get some feedback on the open house.
Yes.
And see if anyone had any thoughts there. And then, second, my, our, my thing here, or our thing here was, Tom was not able to be here because the beach is very busy. He couldn't get off early. But I think what we ask is he rolled out these programs. We get some feedback from him on how it went, what could possibly, you know, be different, improved, what worked well. And then, the idea is to have a larger rollout come next year in the schools. So, I think we have to kind of wait for Tom to give us some feedback on that. But I didn't know if anyone had heard any thoughts about the open house. If we, how we thought it went. I, I thought it, you know, was a very positive thing overall. I think the, you know, the guards were happy to have us there. People from the community were happy to have us there. People were very interactive. The kids that were there were very interactive.
Yeah, the rescue demonstrations were really, really cool to watch. I mean, if you've never seen them, you know, just seeing how they, you know, they rescue people and stuff. For the public to look at that, it's pretty, that's, you know, it's good to see. So, they understand what the lifeguard do, how they perform rescues and stuff. It's just cool to be able to have the headquarters open like that. So, you could just come up and talk to the guards in general or, you know, members of the fire department were there and stuff like that. So, it's just a good meet and greet all around.
Agreed. And I think with this year, it was, we did a limited type of things. We weren't sure what to expect or how it would be received in order to prepare. And we'd like to build on what we did this past, the summer and, you know, have it be a larger buy-in for next summer.
Yeah. Overall, just another continued program that, you know, you can initiate every year. It can get bigger. It can get, you know, however you want to grow it over the years. It's, it's good to do.
Same. I thought it was, I thought it was a great idea, a good event. It would have been better, you know, even better to have maybe some more community, you know, just people that we, that weren't there with us or, you know. A little bit more outreach. But I, you know, I think it was, I don't know how long you've been planning it, but...
That was just for this, for this year. But definitely to your, I think, you know, we'll try to advertise it next year further in advance and more consistently as, as it's approaching.
Yeah, because people were interested. I mean, when I was there early out front, I was like, oh, what's going on? And, you know, anyone who walked by was interested in it.
But we need to get, definitely get a banner for like an open house, something, you know? Yeah. So, there are things that I was thinking of, you know, that we needed to do. We tried to, but it was a little too late.
Yeah, giveaways and stuff like that, you know, that kind of thing.
And also, thank you for the people who supported it. I know that, you know, as a group, people brought food, things along those lines out of their own pocket, which, you know, we really appreciate you, everyone chipping in and doing a little, doing a little bit. It makes the whole picture.
And Yogi, with his voice televising, televising everything and walking everybody there. It was all good.
Maybe, maybe if we did something on the promenade prior to the actual demonstrations on the beach to draw their attention.
Yeah.
Once you got them hooked, then you just drag them down to the beach. Because the kids, like you said, did a great job. They did a really good job. So many people just think, oh, somebody's out there and they need to be rescued. And all of a sudden, they're at the shore. But they don't realize how these kids are smart enough, how they get them in, how they put together that chain.
Tactics they use, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and I feel like next year, it certainly, you know, it's an open house for the community. But I also think it's an appreciation of the beach patrol. And I felt like the people who are, the lifeguards appreciated, you know, having us there, having, you know, just coffee and snacks and stuff because they work hard and...
Yeah.
Well, it's good info gathering too, from like people that come up. You can hear just your general questions about the beach, beach patrol, what's going on down there. So, it's kind of good to kind of pull any kind of, any kind of information you hear from. Kind of helps us, this committee, kind of like what we can do to kind of make the beaches safer, you know, and beach fun, so.
You know, it was funny, but it impressed me. I mean, Harry's got a tough job. I remember with Eddie and my son and, and even Harry, we're 16, 17, 18, 19 years old. They're kids.
Yeah.
And that's a big responsibility to dump on them. And they, they really come through.
They handle it well.
Yeah, we have to really support them.
No, they have a nice group of people there.
And Mark, can you, can you mute yourself?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, but overall, I think it was a great event. That's definitely something you can build on. You know, we, we got a whole nother year to plan it. So, there's a lot we can do for it. We can have definitely a greater presence on the promenade. Definitely.
Agreed.
And then, as far as the education, I think Tom has curriculum for the different age, age ranges.
Yeah.
And I, I'm not sure if the board has approved the curriculum or not, but I think that was something he was working on.
Yeah, it's, it's, but what I remember, it's more or less kind of, you know, in the inner workings of how the school operates, had incorporated into their lesson plans and stuff. So, they all expressed willingness to want to do it, just a matter of fitting it in on top of the existing programs that the beach patrol does already. And they go, they go to the schools and they, they already, they, they do that every year, just about. I think what Tom's vision was, was just having more of a, like a, you know, not just an end of the year thing, but kind of like a consistent thing throughout the year, just to kind of incorporate into like the young kids. So, they understand the, you know, the various tactics of beach safety and stuff like that, and what to do, what lifeguards are and stuff like that. So, it's, he's got a pretty good head on it. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do they want to go to Cape May Elementary?
They're, well, right now, yeah, it's, it's the Mitnick Schools, it's the Cape May Elementary. I think they go to pretty much most of all the elementary schools. I don't really think they go to the high schools. That's, that's not really the area they go to. It's mostly elementary school education.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
That's kind of their, the, the larger thinking is you make the curriculum a little more standardized. You can outsource it to other school districts in the area. That's kind of like his master vision of what can be done, but...
Okay. I was just, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
But my, well, my daughter goes to Wildwood Catholic, and I didn't know if that was like, you know, stepping on their toes, North Wildwoods Beach Patrol, you know, I don't know.
I think education is education. If people and groups are open to it, we'll try to get in front of them. It's...
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of kids from school that go to the, you know, the surf or, you know, whatever. It's not like it's...
You know, the whole premise is just beach safety in general, whether it's Cape May, Wildwood, Stone Harbor. I mean, if, if they like the model that, that we're using locally, they want to deploy it in their areas, then they're, you know, we're open book with the, with the information, you know?
And I think additionally, you know, we've got the beach safety committee, and we have kind of marketing tied to that. Again, as, and we'll go on to that, but in terms of videos and education, I think the idea was again to just like set the stage and then expand within the schools, but also, you know, again, talking to TV stations and just getting, getting word out, getting the education out. But then, that's part of what I guess, what we'll be talking about in terms of marketing and the website once we do the update there.
So, I guess we'll just roll into the marketing portion of this. So, the website is live. We still have a little bit of domain capture work to do, but luckily, a lot of the hard stuff is, we've gone through it. Harry spent the time to do it. So, so the new website is built. It's right now, cape may city bp.com. We're trying to capture the cape may beach patrol.com again. So, we have our people working on it. That's, that's pretty much good to go. So, once that's done, the beach patrol, the city, this committee could basically use it for whatever tool we want for, you know, beach safety initiative, search engine optimization, that kind of thing. So, Sarah, I, I haven't talked to her recently, so I don't know. I know she's been working on the videos. I'd like to say that they might be done. So, we have, we already have existing videos already from previous that are already up there. So, it's, the videos do exist.
They're still, they're still there, but they're not updated.
They're on the beach patrol website. They're, if you, if you, if you link the QR code, it's on every beach front. It says Cape May City Beach Information. That goes directly to...
The Cape May BP.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, and then, we've been kind of marketing the NICSOL alert with the, at the police department. They're, they're pretty much in charge of like marketing that and stuff like that. So, that's been pretty good. I, I've used it myself, and it's really, you get, you get live updates with like thunderstorms and bad weather conditions and stuff like that, missing children. So, it's, it's pretty good. So, we're...
Accidents, floods, yeah, I use it, I use it too.
So, it's been a useful tool in that regard to kind of get, you know, safety initiatives out. So, the, the marketing basically is in motion. It's just a matter of keeping, improving it every year and, and just keep, keep adding to it every, every year, you know? Keep brainstorming things in the group, and we can put things up there. And once it's up, it's up. So, that's pretty much what we've been working on.
Can I have you, Steve, look at the second bullet down on that? So, we can take care of that. Can you give me a small, or somebody give me a, some information on Cove? So, I can do the presentation?
Yep. I can get you some information, like, you know, what he's done and everything like that.
Right. Because he, he worked hard on getting that, getting that whole website completed.
Name is Robert, but his nickname is Cove. So, he's referencing his group as Cove, Solven.
What is his last name?
Solven. His sister actually works for the beach patrol. She's a, she's a guard. So, that's why he's, he's cousin's on the beach patrol. So, he's pretty, he's pretty well-connected with the beach patrol. He volunteered his efforts to go through the process of redoing the whole website for the beach patrol on Squarespace, which is, you know, a modern medium for web, designing websites and stuff like that. So, he did a lot of legwork, designing the website, organizing it. He added a lot of apps on it and stuff like that. So, he did all this work just basically for public good, basically. So, the city would like to recognize him for his efforts on this, so.
And, and they should be appreciated. And I guess, I'm going to, I'll push for the next meeting to have an update from Sarah regarding the videos. Because I think, yeah, we know we needed to get that, that footage shot and see how far along we are there.
Yep. So, that's basically all I have on that. Yeah. And the city put out their rack cards for beach safety, which they give out to everybody whenever they buy a beach tag. So, a whole, everybody that buys a beach tag goes on the beach. I guess, gets any information on the beach, they're going to give them these by the beach tag staff. So, that's pretty good. So, they, they've always done it. So, just basically continuing of the same thing.
And updating it.
Yep.
I, I'm sorry. I have a question about the website. How often is, is it, is it like updated regularly or...
Well, it just really got launched a few months ago.
Oh, okay.
There's been a lot of back and forth with taking the domain ownership from how their old system was. Not, not to worry with the details, but it was kind of, kind of complicated, yeah. A lot of remembering of old passwords on old emails. It was like a multi-layered thing. Because the website was done, I guess, like in WordPress, almost like 10, 15 years ago.
Oh, wow, okay.
So, it's been a while.
I was just wondering if it was, you know, like, is it update, you know, like with the date? And maybe like beach conditions, temperature?
You can. There is, there is a plug on there where you can do that. That would be up to, you know, the beach patrol, whoever would be elected, not elected, but whoever they would designate to do that, to do that.
Yeah.
So, that's something they could do.
Might be too much work. I don't know. It might be.
Yeah, it's, it's, that's on, that would be on that if they would want to do that or not. But it does have real-time weather conditions on there already.
Okay.
So, it does have pretty good, yeah, I mean, you could look at the Weather Channel. It could tell you the same thing, but it's accessible there to people wanting to go on it. But, yeah, but it's, it's an improvement from what, what, what was, what was there. The information is the same, but we added to it and cleaned it up a little bit better. So, it's, it's an improvement, to say the least. I think that basically concludes everything. I don't really have anything on the accessibility max. I think we already discussed that. Eddie, I don't know if you have anything you want to say on behalf of the fire department or anything?
No, it's been, it's been busy. Beach wise, it's been, I'd say, a little bit of a struggle this past weekend.
Still keeping track of all of the, I, I think Alex is keeping track of everything as far as what we were looking at. He was looking at tide, tidal, any surf zone injuries, things like that.
Yeah, but every EMS call we have is, there's a special code that's on the beaches. So, you instantly can take all of those EMS out, and then everything from there is time-saving. So, you can just sort of cross-reference it, you know, unless you're exactly...
Because he, yeah, he used to do reports for us. If you could just, I guess, go back and ask him if he, you know, if he's going to submit reports as far as, you know, those injury reports. Okay, thank you.
And I'll just say, I was on the promenade last week when a gentleman collapsed, and response was fantastic. Really, it was, just came in to control the situation. I know that Jerry Underwise, I believe, was involved, did a really fantastic job. I believe there was a nurse there with him. I saw her. I don't know her name. But also saw ambulance police, and you guys came in, and it was impressive, and thank you.
The one thing I would mention just about that incident was that the public access AED that was at Convention Hall was utilized.
I saw that, yeah. She had them going.
Obviously, it's great. But also, just a month ago, we had one from a foundation that donated one to put that to Cove. So, there's, there's now one right there in the promenade. I mean, it, it worked, it worked very well in that situation this past weekend. You know, we never have to use it again, but now we do it for, even though it's not called the beach, it's right next to the beach.
What's it cost for one of those units?
Three or four.
Well, the, the AED itself is, I'll say, relatively inexpensive. I mean, you can get an AED with the pads and set up for, you know, one or $2,000. But there's matching grits that are out there, and they can provide some of that matching grit stuff. But there's also like the housing. There's an all-weather housing that keeps it cool because if it gets too hot, the pads can be generated. So, that was really where that foundation that donated, bought some of the matching grit, was really beneficial to put one in the Cove.
Do you feel it were needed up and down the beachfront? Do you think it'd be beneficial?
I mean, it's one of those things that, you know, the AED and how, and how soon it gets applied and just like, you know, starting CPR right away is, in those first few minutes, really matters. We had a great response in, in the city. The beach patrol's there, but obviously, the beach patrol has hours of operation.
Yeah.
And so, it could definitely be something that you want maybe to work. I'm not sure exactly where we would look into, but yeah, moving forward, maybe somewhere down towards a work ethic.
Like put them, say, well, I guess you would have to put them in places that would be there year-round? Like those beach tag booths, I guess.
There's a couple of them all. There's one here, there's one at the, at the bus station. Firefighter Jackson is in charge of that in the city, kind of organizing all those things. I mean, even if it was maybe just towards the summer, that'd be on that.
Right, like put them out like seasonally maybe, like, hey, like maybe put them in the beach tag booths or something like that, like outside and accessible, because they're pretty much every other block, just about. They're removed after the summer. They don't stay up there all, all year long, I don't think.
Well, so that's like this housing unit is heated and air conditioned just to make sure that it doesn't have a problem that the AED maintains for year-round.
See, and you need, you need electric, I would assume, to, to do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
The ability of the Cove is convenient enough.
Yeah. Electricity there, yeah.
Does someone calibrate them, Eddie, every once in a while to make sure they are working if you need it?
So, there's expiration dates on them, and there is a little red or green dot that'll beep, that'll alert you if it is not functioning properly. So, I'm not sure what the regular schedule is. Obviously, we check our, our car every day.
Yeah.
But, you know, you would notice anybody go by whether it's not working properly.
Okay.
Good to know. Okay. Anybody have anything, any other things they want to bring up or discuss?
Well, just to, the two of you, I, I don't think you're on any of the subcommittees. A lot of the work for these, for this committee is done in the subcommittees.
No, I think, just for your edification, I know Katie Blum here, but with William, again, we'll meet with the subcommittees.
William.
You have to stop doing that.
I mean, sir.
Yogi.
Uh, no, yeah. With the subcommittee.
Because I'm not going to answer you.
You wouldn't be the only one. I get ignored a lot. That's okay. So, the subcommittees, you know, we try to meet outside of this and then come together here to give updates. You know, so I think it's a little hard.
you know, so I think it's a little hard, we've got several members on the beach patrol on.
Summer's a tough time.
And, yeah, it's July, so, you know, hopefully come end of August, we'll make sure that we really ask people to, to give reports again on some of this stuff, but what we, you know, we'd like you two to do is take a look and see where you might be interested in being on which subcommittees.
Okay.
Doesn't mean you don't participate in the larger portion, but maybe just a little more emphasis.
And things might pop up too, like, all of a sudden, like a new committee, subcommittee could be started, because there's another topic that we're on, or another item needs to be addressed, so that, that does happen, so. So most, most of the work that we do is if beach safety committee occurs in those subcommittee meetings, we kind of divide and conquer certain things, and we come to, you know, meeting here to kind of update what we're working on, basically.
And there's three right now, three, four?
Yeah, there's four. So the PA system, beach replenishment, beach and zone safe, beach zone safety, and then get to, I know I would think for you, because the marketing is definitely tied to the beach safety and education.
Beach replenishment one is kind of like, covers anything related to, you know, beach slope, beach replenishment activities, storm corv engineer.
Engineer, yeah, okay.
That's pretty much all, all that.
Okay.
That's up to me, which.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess just let you know, Christine, yeah, two of you let, Christine know.
Yeah, so if anybody doesn't have anything else, I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I was just going to announce that the next meeting in August, there are five Mondays, we have determined August 22nd will be our meeting date.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good, okay.
Where do the subcommittees meet, during this meeting, or separate, on another day, another time?
It could be weekend, it could be evening, it could be anywhere, it could be.
Well, it's, again, it's usually three or four persons, possibly five, on the subcommittees, so we'll just have a text chain go, and we'll decide where we're going to meet, and.
Sometimes we meet here.
You know, what's convenient for people.
Yeah, meet at our homes, offices, whichever, we kind of go all over.
Beach patrol.
But this is always Monday at 4:30, a Monday at 4:30.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep, and, you know, sometimes if we, if we need to postpone a meeting, we don't have, you know, a lot of people access it, or there's not much to go, to discuss, so we, you know, we postpone it for the following, following week or whatever, because we've done that a couple times, that's basically it.
Okay.
Okay.
This is, this is really cool, I'm surprised they only give them out when you buy a beach tag, they should be, these should be, have their own little box up on the promenade.
Well, again, I think for next year, we're going to try to get them out to the hotels and.
Do they do, yeah, that's.
Yeah, I give them out at the beach stands.
Yeah, it's pretty informative, I've never seen these before.
And they get, they get a lot of them printed, they, I, I mean, if, if we really wanted to be aggressive with getting them out, you know, we can go deliver them to all the hotels and stuff like that, see if they want them, I'm sure they would.
And it was just updated?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, it, it just doesn't have beach safety stuff too, it has like information about like what the city, Cape May.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
It's small, you can put it in your pocket, it's pretty useful.
Do the rent, you know, like Saturday mornings when the.
Changeovers.
Real estate companies, you know, set up their tents and stuff, they hand them out there too?
And the bags, you can put them in the bags when they pick them up, yeah, it's a good idea.
Yeah, I don't know if he has any, Mark, anything else?
Can you print, Steve, you did that, or? But there's lots of them, you said?
Yeah, I designed a rack card version too, a little bit bigger, we're gonna, we're gonna be printing them too, to kind of, in addition to this, just to give us a little boost in August.
Okay.
So those will be hitting the streets next week.
Okay.
So, yeah.
You need help with that, or?
We, I will eventually, yeah, once they get here, we'll, we'll probably need to get some.
Distribution of that, yeah.
Yeah, some extra boots in the ground to get the good amount, we will.
Yeah, I'm in.
Anybody got anything else? Okay, I will, I don't know if we have anybody from the public calling in or whatever, to say anything for the public portion?
I think they have to be here for it.